Alrighty, I think we're ready to begin. Thank you very much, Mrs. Kent. We always love your stage directions. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Mesa City Council's study session for September 11th. This is a day that is ingrained in our national conscience. I will say more at our formal council meeting following. But you can't even say the date without taking a moment to recognize its importance, to reflect on the lives lost, and to be grateful to all the first responders. Thank you. Firstly, let's begin with our study session. First, I want to excuse Mayor Giles. Also, I believe Councilmember Glover is on the phone. Are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Chris. So with that, let's begin with our first. Let's review the final agenda for tonight's meeting. We'll start with the liquor license. Number three, their liquor license, and I believe that 3C has a protest. But before Mr. Myers, who we're asking to come up. Mr. Myers? Mr. Smith's gonna wait.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, as Tim's coming up, maybe I can sort of give some context to this issue and some history also. The council acts in multiple regards on different matters. It can act as a legislative body, an administrative body, or a quasi-judicial body. And in this particular matter, on doing liquor license, it's really acting in more of an administrative body. And the reason why is because the state legislature has passed extensive state statutes that govern this process, and then the administrative process has also been adopted by the liquor department. And so the council's ability or latitude on any particular liquor license is limited by that. In fact, there's 12 grounds on which this council can deny a liquor license, and I'll come back to those in a couple of minutes. And there's really sort of three decisions that the council can select tonight. One is to recommend approval. The second is to recommend disapproval or to make no recommendation. And I'll come back and talk about those three options here in just a couple of minutes and some other possibilities to add to that as far as a letter that can go with any of those recommendations. In this particular matter, there's an objection by Ms. Liao, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. And that objection is largely framed against another gentleman, a gentleman called Mr. Chung in her letter. I just want to point out that Mr. Chung is not the applicant. And so there's numerous allegations regarding Mr. Chung, and he's not the applicant. There's an allegation that he is the brother-in-law of the applicant. I don't know if that's true or not. The applicant is Mr. Nam. But I just want to point out that the allegations are really predominantly, a vast majority of them, against Mr. Chung, who used to be the business partner of Ms. Liao and owned a restaurant together. They're currently in a bankruptcy proceeding. There's a number of filings in that bankruptcy proceeding. I can talk about that more. I've looked at those also. Within those proceedings, there's also an allegation from Ms. Liao's attorney that there was also a romantic relationship between her and Mr. Chung. Both that ended and their business partnership ended. And then there's allegations regarding conversion of some of that business property. All those are involving Mr. Chung. Like I said, the applicant is Mr. Nam. And let me go back to sort of the overarching sort of what this council is. This council is providing a recommendation ultimately to the state liquor department. And then ultimately, the decision is the state liquor department's. It's not this council's decision. It's similar to, or akin to, the Planning and Zoning Board makes a recommendation to this council on certain matters. And it's a recommendation. And similarly, this council's making a recommendation to the state liquor board. And in fact, you only have 60 days to make that recommendation. So there's many limitations. There's, like I said, there's 12 grounds on which you can recommend denial. The only one that is potentially applicable is, and it basically says, and I could read it to you, it basically says, "Someone that lives within one mile or owns property within one mile can come and give testimony and object, and you can consider that." Ms. Liao does not live within one mile, but she has, and in your packet is, she's gotten authorization from one of her employees or several of her employees that live within one mile so that she can speak on their behalf. So you'll see that, and that's the reason why that's there. Let me go back to the three options that you have. One is for a recommendation of approval or disapproval. Those are the, and no recommendation. If this council, after hearing and seeing obviously the written complaint of Ms. Liao has concerns, you could disapprove the, you can make a recommendation for disapproval. You can make a recommendation of approval, but you could ask staff and direct staff to put a cover letter on that to say, "Ask the state liquor board to investigate the allegations of Ms. Liao." And in fact, the state liquor department has investigators themselves, so they do have staff that do just that. Or you can make no recommendation. And while Mesa hasn't done this very often, it has done it a couple of times in the past. We've been told other cities do it more frequently. And what that does is also flag the item for investigation. So if the idea is, if the intent of council or direction of council after you hear further, even though you've seen it in writing, the allegations of Ms. Liao, if you would like the liquor board to investigate it further, you could either make a no recommendation, a motion for no recommendation, or a recommendation for approval, but direct staff to put it in the cover letter, request to investigate the matter further. I don't know, I may have taken some of Tim's, but maybe not all of Tim's.
Mr. Myers?
That was a long walk, Tim, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Why don't you go ahead and weigh in on this issue and give us direction?
Like Jim pointed out, we can go ahead and send a letter along with that if we want. I have nothing before me that would make me want to give a recommendation of denial. Mr. Nam looks fine on all the paperwork that we've taken a look at and everything with that. So based on the applicant and the information that we have at this point in time, I am recommending approval. But that's up to the council, like Jim pointed out. Either that or a recommendation for, or no recommendation. So that's where staff is at at this point in time.
Colleagues on the council, do you have any concerns, any questions?
Are the applicants, thank you, Vice Mayor. Are the applicants here for this process? Do we know? The study session, well, they're not here right now.
And they both were invited to both, so.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Vice Mayor and Council, you know, we're assuming it'll probably get pulled off the consent agenda by Ms. Liao. But even if it isn't, if you want to keep it on the consent agenda after it's read in, we could also direct staff as part of, prior to the vote on the consent agenda, to put that cover letter on to direct the state to do the investigation. So you don't have to pull it off consent if Ms. Liao isn't here so that, you know, they can still provide the direction to the state that, yes, it is a recommendation for approval, but with a letter to investigate further.
Mr. Brady?
So kind of just as we go down this path or looking at options. Mr. Chung, is he an employee, is he a owner? Is he a co-applicant of any type? So I just want to be careful, councils, are we opening the door for future applications if that's, I'm not going to try to get away in on the value of this, but we've typically only evaluated the applicant's position as far as ability to take on the liquor license and their history. We haven't gone beyond that to employees or relatives or others. I just don't know, the thought about, you know, if we do it here, does that suggest that we need to do it beyond here? Or only when we get complaints? I don't know. But just trying to be consistent and uniform. Maybe this creates an exception, but it's unusual for us to consider anything, anybody other than the applicant itself.
Mr. Brady, thank you. I believe Mr. Chung is here. He's welcome to come and speak if you'd like to address this issue.
Mr. Nam.
Nam is here. Mr. Nam is here.
Mr. Nam, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Nam, would you come forward? He is the applicant. Mr. Nam, you're the applicant, right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you go ahead and state your name and your address?
My first name is Tac, and last name is Nam. And then my home address is 1401 East Kokonino Drive, Chandler, Arizona, A5249.
Now, you've submitted an application for liquor license. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes, sir. I'm trying to open my own restaurant in Mesa River View. So that's gonna be a Japanese restaurant. So that's why we applied for the liquor license. And then Mr. Chung, who is my brother-in-law, he is my employee. So yeah, I'm 100% on this restaurant, so he's not, he doesn't own anything.
So, Mr. Nam, you're the one submitting the application?
Yes, sir.
By yourself and not tied into Mr. Chung? Okay. Do you, any council members, do you have any question for Mr. Nam? So the question remains whether we should proceed as is, as approval with a cover letter, or what do you, would you recommend? Mr. Freeman?
Well, based on a lot of the information here, I'd be more comfortable with approval with a cover letter.
Okay.
And then I think both sides have, due diligence has been served.
Okay. Any other comments?
I hesitate to do a cover letter only because of what Chris said, of you kind of opened Pandora's box for anyone to complain about another business. And then you have to start evaluating that down the line. Of course, this is your district, so I'll follow your lead on this. But I would caution that we don't want to open Pandora's box and start investigating employees and neighbors or friends or what have you of, because Mr. Chung apparently isn't on the, on the business licensing or what have you. That'd be my only caution.
My only thought back with that is we're not doing the investigating. The state is, is that correct?
Yes.
And so this allows them to pursue that a little further if they need to. And I don't think we're setting the precedent. I think we just have a unique situation here that needs a little more due diligence. But that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Glover, do you have any comments on this issue?
You know, I feel like Councilmember Thompson, and like Mr. Brady said, I do feel that it will open up Pandora's box and that we should not submit a letter, that we should just follow the recommendation of staff for approval.
Okay. Is this an action? Mr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Thompson and Chris in the sense that he's not an applicant on this and doesn't own any of the business, so it's completely irrelevant to jeopardize this gentleman's business from getting a liquor license, in my opinion. I think there's enough government constraints in the way from opening your business, and we don't need to be another one.
I'll just way back in. I'm good with that, too.
Okay.
Consent as is.
Okay, we'll keep it on consent. There's no action required at this moment, at the point. We'll do it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Thank you, Mr. Nam. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, we'll proceed with the agenda. Any other concerns on liquor licenses? We're good? What about items under 4A? Contracts? Any questions on those? Okay, moving down. Any questions on 5A? On resolutions? Okay. On six, which are resolutions? And number seven? Is introduction of ordinances? We're good? Any questions on number eight? Plaid approvals? And number nine is Southwest Redevelopment Area Plan, which is going to be our next presentation by Mr. Jupdeniak and Sarah Sorenson. If you want to move, come forward. Alrighty, who's gonna start the conversation?
I'm gonna start it off. Vice Mayor, it's good to see you. Members of council. Let me introduce Sarah Sorenson, who I think you already know is project manager, charges project. And Bruce Meehan is with Logan Simpson Design, who's our consultant on this, has been working with us over the last 16 months or so as we've assembled the plan going forward. But wanted to take a minute and just step back. And it was, I guess it was early 2016 when we received direction from council to explore the creation of three different redevelopment areas. And I think from there, they all surround downtown. And there's a reason, I'm gonna get into that here in just a second. But it's really, a few weeks ago, you heard about the finding of necessity for the east and the west areas of downtown. And today, we really want to focus just on the southwest corner of things. So Sarah, go ahead and go to the next slide. But this is our last step of the formal approval process. From there, we'll get into implementation stages after that. So, next slide is, I think, just a little bit of background. Redevelopment area designated by the city, so, you know, it's in need of revitalization, pretty straightforward. But it has to show a predominance of need for revitalization. Predominance of BLYT, I believe, is the statute that's necessary, necessary to improve the area. It needs to be revitalized. It's a necessary step for us in using economic development tools. And really, the big economic development tool we're focused on is government property lease excise tax. We refer to it as G-Plat. There are now, that gives us four redevelopment areas, as you see outlined there as well. And the boundaries of these are all contiguous. So Sarah, go ahead and hit the next slide. And I know that's hard for people to see, but I want to show the green is outlined, that's downtown that's outlined in green. And in blue is the southwest redevelopment area. Again, they're contiguous on purpose, just like east and west was contiguous before. We're trying to maximize the benefit of the central business district, and that really allows us to maximize the use of government property lease excise tax going forward. Next one, I believe, zooms in a little bit more for you as well. That shows the area as it leads from downtown, south on Country Club, and goes west on Southern Avenue, all the way to our city line. It's 281 parcels and 616 acres, just to throw a few facts in there for you as well. It includes some great potential for redevelopment or adaptive reuse for properties like the Fiesta Mall and the property at northwest corner of Alma School in Southern. As a matter of fact, we're here, really the first developer of the Fiesta Mall, really asked us to look at and consider the redevelopment area process for the repositioning of the mall. So I think that's important for us as we try to revitalize and look at opportunities. Next page is some of what we've gone through. It's a long process. I mentioned the 16 months. It's complex, but really divided into two phases. The first one is the BLYT study and the finding of necessity. And that was done about a year ago. And now tonight, we are here to present the redevelopment plan, which is really here for the strategy side of things and the programs that we can implement. We've had various stakeholders and citizen participation meetings. Some of those are outlined there. I think was interesting for me, very appreciative is what the common thread of our proactive approach. So as we take a look at what's going on in Southwest and the Fiesta area, that was a very important piece. With that, I'm gonna step aside and let Bruce step in here and cover some of the details.
Sure. Vice Mayor, council members, I want to first start off by thanking the professionalism of both property owners in this exercise. It's a hard thing to talk about redevelopment, but they've been very supportive, as well as staff and the steering committee. It was a really great process and all forward-thinking. So all I can say is thank you for an effort like this. Just in the vision itself, the vision talks about really rejuvenating that economic vibrancy of that Fiesta Mall area, as well as the gateway into the city. Also looking at a new opportunity for employment center, especially since that demand has shown that that exists. And then some new mixed-use development that's gonna be part of the redevelopment. If we look at the plan organization itself, it starts off with the objectives, the history, public involvement. In addition, it talks about the vision, but it also talks about what are the key issues we're trying to solve? And the plan itself really focuses on those larger strategies that are gonna make a difference versus trying to cover everything, which is not our role here, it's just to set the stage. And then lastly, it talks about those appendices. We got to remember that there was a market study done, BLYT study, finding of necessity, that set the stage for this effort. Bill talked a little bit about priority development sites. Certain things will take care of themselves if we put the right regulations, or in some ways, remove the regulations in terms of setting the stage for good development to happen. But the priority sites clearly are listed there in terms of the Fiesta Mall site, the Country Club area around Highway 60, and the northwest corner of Southern and Alma. Those are key areas that we focus on. Sometimes if you make those cattle sites happen or give them a nudge, the rest of will follow. So we have prioritized some of those within the plan itself. As I stated in terms of the plan structure, it focuses on the biggest issues and how we can use strategies to address those. One of them is the lack of a core anchor. Anytime you lose an area like the Fiesta Mall, even though people remember it fondly, there is a repositioning of property such as this after a certain lifespan. So that's an essential component of this. It does talk about making a new center that's focused more on employment than retail itself, especially in the ever-facing change of retail. It talks about supporting projects. So again, this is not a must-do. It lists the action items to investigate, and that's pretty critical, what you'll be adopting or accepting. Those are this list of action items to further investigate and implement over time. That includes the G-Plat itself, which is the government property lease excise tax, additional investment in terms of public infrastructure, so that's for a strategic purpose that meets the plan's vision. The idea of transitioning into a major employment site in terms of marketing, as well as new programs like site demolition, assisting the ability to remove antiquated buildings across the city or across the redevelopment area. And last is making sure that it meets the vision of the city in terms of complementing the rest of the community. There are some imagery in here, don't take them to heart. People can get wrapped up in terms of what things look like. This is a chance we take so people realize that this is one of many possible visions, and I can give you many other disclaimers if you need it. But that includes the idea of, in places like Southern and Alma, making sure that we do anchor those key areas so that we can set the stage for what happens next door at the Fiesta Mall. So that includes additional mixed-use development and transition to some of the residential that occurs there. If we go to other problem statements or issues that we're trying to solve, the idea of an outdated model, we talked about the sort of changing face of retail. There are things that are, that sometimes are past their lifespan. So the idea that we will provide new tools that allow for the redevelopment of some of these sites. In some cases, the private sector's ready to go. They just need the tools or the regulations that sort of allow them to actually do what they do best. That includes the concept of consolidation of property with the idea that you can implement code that allows or encourages at least people to group together property that might have been separated into small pieces, because sometimes you can do more when that occurs. The idea of removing some of those buildings, that can be done by the private sector or it can be done with some assistance. New zoning requirements are clearly something that's on the forefront of planning's mind. The idea of new redevelopment of areas beside Fiesta Mall. Sometimes people refer to it as the Korean Mall, but there's a mall that has a little bit of underutilized retail in it, and there's ways for us to encourage the adjustment of that. And lastly, the idea of high-quality employment, especially when we look at incomes in that area, raising the bar in terms of providing great jobs for people is clearly a priority for staff and the steering committee. Supporting projects, the connection in terms of the imagery that you're looking at is connecting the Fiesta Mall area through that mall area to Banner Health and our college. Creating essentially a new tech district is a great opportunity. It's a long-term vision, but that connection is almost there. It's an exciting vision for the city and very exciting for the steering committee. Also, if you look at problem statement number three, the idea that we cannot just passively watch this area, we have to take a proactive approach, and hence why you're doing the study, to make sure that we do not encourage anything from declining further so that we can encourage the right atmosphere for redevelopment. That includes supporting projects like the infill incentive program used all over the state. That is essentially fast-tracking programs that meet the vision through removing of barriers. Also, the idea of making sure that we're effective in terms of our code enforcement, making sure that we're fair in terms of applying this so we maintain a certain level of quality within this area. Problem statement number four is making sure that we make use of a better mix of land uses. So if we look at that idea of this sort of tech district, or something that really makes use of both the healthcare industry as well as the college itself, having an employment center, and even having some housing for folks in between, I think that's a very complementary mix of land uses that would work well together. In order to do that, we are looking at not only really encouraging that employment center along the Fiesta Mall, but also a new form-based code that gives it a little more flexibility. And then making sure that we also promote flexibility in zoning as we enter in the Fiesta Mall area. Lastly, on--
Excuse me. Councilmember Thompson, a question?
On the form-based code, we have the form, we have a form-based code for our downtown area, but we don't necessarily have one for other areas of our city, correct? So are we going to develop a new form-based code specific to some of these areas? For example, the Fiesta area to make it more walkable, bicycle-friendly?
Well, John, maybe give a brief what that form-based code allows to happen.
Sure. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, the form-based code is largely designed for urban areas, the downtown area. And we, that's the area, the direction we think we'd want to see the Southern Avenue Fiesta Mall area goes, have more urban format. So the existing code probably works pretty well, but we would need to do some calibration to check and see if there would be any adjustments that would be needed within that code.
Go ahead.
Moving on, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking too quickly. Definitely slow me down if you need to. Problem statement number five, clearly Fiesta Mall was developed where it was for a reason. I mean, it is in a key location in terms of visibility. That's recognized. If we look at areas coming off of US 60, that gateway of US 60 is pretty critical. Making sure that we make use of that gateway is pretty important. So recommendations on that does include both redoing of a streetscape coming off of 60. Looking at also the market feasibility of the development around that area, and I think people are well aware of the water park that exists there. There's a hotel on one side. That area is ripe for new development, but further studying that area so you get the right gateway development, so we set the stage as people come in. That's one vision. That's an image in front of the water park. I hesitate to show you that, but that's, I think, a great location. It also provides an anchor to the other hotel. But that's not necessarily what has to go there. Again, additional study will have to be what makes sense in that location. Also, problem statement number six, we can't acknowledge, sometimes you want to sugarcoat redevelopment plans. There is acknowledgement that during the stakeholder interviews, that there was concern about neighborhood decline and crime within the area, and making sure that we stabilize the area. So that is making sure that we really make use of our public safety programs, use of beautification programs, and our code enforcement efforts to make sure that this area continues to be a safe place and a great business environment. Number seven, getting back to council members' concerns over pedestrian, pedestrian mobility. This area is right now completely vehicle-dominated, but starting to think about the future in terms of pedestrian and vehicles sort of working together. The idea, some of those new roadways that would both connect the hospital with the college can help alleviate some of that, as well as street improvements that are oriented towards more the pedestrian and some of the desires that employers have. This includes projects that include access control plans. So this would have to be additional study of where can we safely remove access points and add medians, but this would have to be done hand-in-hand with the private development and redevelopment actions, as well as sign replacement in terms of adding to aesthetics and new landscaping, as well as new bus connections. On that note, I can't talk any faster than I did, so that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, colleagues? Any question from council?
So Vice Mayor, just real quick on next steps. So upstairs, you have a public hearing--
Yes.
--that'll take place. There is a proposed implementation plan from there. You know, staff will really start to put that together after formal approval. Then we work and sit down with the city manager and talk about funding and what's available for different resources all the way around. And then we start to market and share all that data with all the stakeholders and go from there.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council, I just want to also thank the staff who've been working on this project, and our consultants really did a nice job of presenting this for us. I think what we'll do too is we have two others that are in the pipeline.
Yes. Yes.
--and so as we work on this proposed implementation plan, I guess being the first consultants out this year, they've kind of given us some ideas of looking at programs that were mentioned here and different incentive programs. I think we need to make sure, I want to be careful, are consistent to looking ahead to the other two that are coming, RDAs. So we'll try to do it as kind of a comprehensive, so we can say, here's a package of programs or incentives for the RDAs. Now, there may be some that are unique to specific RDAs, but I'd like to have like a base grouping of incentives and programs that apply across all of them, and so that's something we'd be looking at to bring back to council. So we're kind of, and I know it's confusing to get caught up in which RDA and which phase we're at, so this is like the first one, the original, and so it's further along than the others, because it wasn't too long ago, we had a presentation on another, on the, kind of where we were a year ago with this one, but we'll try to keep it clear about which ones we're talking about and moving forward. And this was interesting, that this one, I think it was mentioned in the beginning, what prompted our movement or development of this expansion of the RDA that was connected to downtown was really at the request of a commercial property owner in the Fiesta District who was asking for some assistance, through some programs that were uniquely really, at least the maximum benefit would require us to be included in this, in an RDA, and so that's what we've been able to do here. So we'll try to make sure that, again, we bring back somewhat of a comprehensive program of incentives for RDAs. There may be some that are unique to each specific RDA, but that's, will be our approach as we go forward. So then upstairs, today on the agenda, what is it the council, let's just be clear, because that's going to happen here quickly, what is the council action tonight for?
So they'll conduct a public hearing, and then we'll ask you to approve the plan that's in front of you, and it takes a two-third vote, Mr. Smith, if that's correct, and I think that that would be the two, basically the action steps that are going forward.
Great. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
What is community policing through environmental design? Is that like brighter lights everywhere?
Well, it's, we've had the presentations here in the past from the police department. I think it started off with a lot of presentations from convenience stores, apartment complexes, I'm looking for some help from PD, and they go and work with the property owners on coming up with different programs specific to things, like you said, what they put in the windows, what they do with the landscaping, help me out.
Lighting.
Here we go. I tried to talk as long as I could.
Good afternoon. I think Mr. Brady covered it pretty well there. You're looking at all aspects of a business, you're looking at the environment so that you can decrease the possibility of some type of crime happening, so you do look at the landscape, you look at the way that the structure is within, inside of the business and how counters are set up and that type of thing. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
You've been very successful working with businesses in, I think, apartment complexes?
Our crime prevention officers go in and they actually do evaluations at businesses, and they'll even sometimes look at houses if you have a repeat problem at a house and look at what you can do environmentally to change things up.
Good. Great. Thank you, Bill and team, for a wonderful job. Appreciate all your hard work. Hopefully, we can encourage some development in that area and get this process going. We're very excited about the prospects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All righty, proceeding with the study session agenda. Item three, approval of minutes from executive session held on. It's been moved by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Freeman. Mr. Glover, are you present?
I am.
Okay, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Proceed, item number five, report on any meetings and conferences attended, councilmembers? Okay, that was easy. All righty, Mr. Brady. Oh, yeah, Mr. Freeman wants to make a statement, one or two, right?
Yeah, we had the privilege of going back to New York City and seeing some of the new ideas that ASU has, as well as startup companies, incubators, and we had the privilege of touring the Brooklyn Navy Yard and NYU and Google. So we got a lot of insight into their operations, so appreciate what we've been able to do there, so maybe we can apply some back here in Little Mesa, Arizona.
Great. Sounds like an excellent meeting. Good tour. Any other comments? All righty, Mr. Brady, schedule of future meetings, general information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. I don't believe we'll have a quorum available for the 14th, so that will be canceled for this Thursday study session, but we will be meeting on September 18th, our council meeting. So if you have any, we'll get the agenda out, so if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me or city staff if you have any questions on the agenda. The first time we'll be able to meet together to review the agenda will actually be a week from now, right before the meeting, but if there's anything that comes up before then, please feel free to contact us.
Study session at 5, you think?
We'll get back to you on that. I'm trying to remember, I do believe we might have some items, no, maybe not, so we'll get back to you and decide on what that is.
All righty. Can I have a motion for German?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All righty, we'll see you upstairs.